Morning councillors, almighty God. We, the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane, are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated, I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I advise that Councillor Hammond and Councillor Owen will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Hutton that councillors Owen and Hammond be granted leaves of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, before proceeding with my budget presentation, I'd like to point out that a copy of each budget submission for 2023/24 financial year has been placed in front of each councillor and a set of documents has been tabled.
Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Mr Chair, I rise to present the 2023/24 budget to this council and also to the almost 1.3 million residents of the beautiful city of Brisbane. Brisbane's future is incredibly bright. We are a city on the move, but we also face considerable challenges and pressures. People are flocking here in record numbers. We need more homes for people to live in. We need to ensure that people can safely and easily get around. And we need to ensure that we have high quality parks, green space and recreational facilities. Importantly, we need to ensure that we support residents at a time when cost pressures are mounting. Against this backdrop, this budget comes at an important time in the city's history. It's a time at which, more than ever, stable and experienced leadership matters. Of course, it also mattered when Brisbane was in the grip of a pandemic. Our team quickly set about providing grants and slashing fees to households and businesses during the height of the restrictions. The decisions we made in the pandemic helped thousands of businesses, residents, not-for-profit community clubs at a time of unprecedented upheaval, when many people saw their income vanish overnight. But together, we got through it, and we kept the budget strong despite the incredible cost pressures at that time. And stability and experience also mattered during the worst flood, or most costly flood to hit Brisbane in decades, in February last year, causing damage to more than 23,000 homes and businesses. Now, following that freak three-day rain event, our team quickly began the enormous rebuilding and recovery effort. We cleared 75,000 tonnes of flood damaged goods from the curbside. We repaired 17,000 potholes, and we've been fixing roads, bikeways and bridges and community facilities. As former Queensland governor, Chief Justice Paul De Jersey said in his flood review, and I quote, “Council's approach has served the people of Brisbane very well. And just like the pandemic, together we got through the flood and together we kept the budget strong and balanced.” Now, Mr Chair, just like the stability and experience of this team mattered during the pandemic and the flood, it matters now. Brisbane's incredible lifestyle and endless opportunities have made us the fastest growing capital city in Australia. We are growing at three times the rate of Sydney and twice the rate of Melbourne. And this success story is certainly no accident. Our team's strong commitment to ensuring Brisbane remains clean and green, a vibrant place to visit and a great place to live, has made us an appealing destination to other Queenslanders, to other Australians and to people from right across the globe. Time Magazine's recent decision to name us as one of the top 50 destinations in the world shows that there's now a global buzz around Brisbane. No doubt being named the host city for the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games helped. But the challenge right now is to ensure one thing, that Brisbane does not become a victim of its own success. Housing is an issue right now, right across Australia, because of global supply chain problems, labour shortages and huge construction cost increases. However, the sudden and unpredicted population growth that we've seen post-COVID has ensured a large increase in owner occupiers at the expense of rentals. This has exposed years of chronic under-investment in social housing by the state government and contributed to a spike in homelessness. Unfortunately, there is no silver bullet solution, but our council is eager to play its part. That's why we will continue to invest in the very successful Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme that I introduced in 2019. We've already invested $4.3 million into this programme, and the additional 4.3 over the coming few years will make a real impact. For many, it will be a difference between life on the streets or a permanent home. And most importantly, for so many, it will mean the difference between hopelessness and hope for the future. But we're not stopping there. I've been a very vocal advocate of the state government stepping up and leading the opening of the idle pink and bar quarantine facility. I want to thank every councillor, including those Labor councillors who supported our motion, calling on the state government to act on this issue. As I've said repeatedly, this facility isn't perfect, but it's certainly better than sleeping in a car or a tent. And this budget confirms our commitment of $1 million towards opening the pink and bar quarantine facility. Mr Chair, every indicator shows our city will continue to grow quickly, and the experienced and stable team that I lead has responded with the Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy. Meanwhile, the destructive approach of Labor and the Greens has seen them opposing new homes and jumping onto every passing nimby bandwagon they can for cheap political points. Our neighbourhood plans are essential when it comes to the creation of new homes. And while those opposite continue to come up with excuses about why these homes should not be built, in fact, they voted against more than 80% of all neighbourhood plans here Mr Chair, it's an appalling and an irresponsible approach, and it's a destructive approach which, if unchecked, it could drive down supply and force up housing prices even further, exponentially. Instead of putting politics first, like Labor and the Greens have time and time again, we've always put our responsibilities to the people of Brisbane first. And when it comes to planning for the future, we always strive to do the right thing. We strive to do the responsible thing, even if it is not always the easiest or most popular thing. That's why we're pushing ahead with our Sustainable Growth Strategy. At its heart, Mr Chair, this is an anti-sprawl strategy. We must strike the right balance to ensure that Brisbane can meet the huge demand for housing while preserving low-density areas, unique character areas and precious green space. We're going for tall rather than urban sprawl. And to achieve this, our plan will allow greater building heights in South Brisbane's Carilpa precinct.
Councillor Johnston.
In exchange, we expect highly sustainable buildings, great public realm and open space and housing diversity. We're also ensuring that future growth happens primarily in areas with good access to public transport. This will help reduce congestion in our roads and ensure that Brisbane becomes even more sustainable in the future. This budget also confirms our continued commitment to housing diversity with the implementation of our new incentive programme for build-to-rent developments. By allowing infrastructure charges to be paid over time, the incentive will help the industry's cash flow and help these projects get up and running sooner. We will review the areas around Brisbane's major centres, at Carrendale, Chirmside, Garden City, Indrapilly, Tomball and To Wong, to unlock more housing and create more jobs. And as announced in last year's budget, we're identifying underutilised industrial and commercial land in our suburbs, which can be used for a variety of different housing types. I can announce today that Tomball, Stones Corner and Yaronga will be progressed in the coming financial year through suburban renewal. And we'll work to-
Councillor Johnston, I will warn you.
And we'll work with communities to identify even more ways to provide a diverse range of housing needs. I can also confirm that we will investigate opportunities where infrastructure charges can be waived when underutilised office buildings are converted into homes. While these conversions are not without their challenges, this is one way that we may be able to help increase housing supply in a lower cost and more affordable way. Our approach will help building a better Brisbane while preserving the lifestyle and green space that Brisbane residents love. That's what an experienced and stable council delivers, Mr Chair, and that's why experience matters. Mr Chair, it doesn't matter where you turn recently, we're seeing cost of living increases everywhere. Just recently, it was announced that Queensland power prices will increase by a whopping 21.5%, well above inflation. Our team recognises the cost crunch that's occurring, and we're acting. And that's why this budget includes some fantastic initiatives that will benefit every single resident in Brisbane, regardless of where they live or their age. We've just launched our first smart library lockers in Holland Park and Carinae, and with four more funded in the budget, we're rolling them out in Grange, Mitchelton, New Farm and Brackenridge, and that's just the beginning. But most importantly, it is a free service. We're also cutting the cost of holding events and festivals in Brisbane, as well as streamlining the approval and assessment process. Hundreds of organisers and community groups will benefit, as well as local small business. But just as critically, our residents will also benefit, because this will keep much-loved community events and festivals throughout Brisbane thriving, while also enticing new ones to establish. Our city is Australia's lifestyle capital. Whether it's cut-price activities for kids, free concerts for seniors here in City Hall, we're committed to ensuring that Brisbane has a great range of free and affordable events for all ages, abilities and interests. Mr Chair, with rising living costs causing bigger bills and eating into disposable income, there's an impact on what residents can afford to do in their spare time. Fun often comes at a cost, particularly for families. In response, we're significantly reducing the cost of visiting council's 22 pools over summer. We're calling it the $2 Summer Dips. Whether you like to relax by the poolside, do laps for fitness or take the kids to one of our many aqua parks, we're making our pools more affordable this summer. And with over 1.2 million visits to our pools last year, the number of residents who will benefit will be significant. And in fact, it's something like 15,000 people a day that attend our pools during summer. For an adult, this will drop the cost of a pool visit from $6.40 to just $2. For an eligible child, the cost will drop from $4.75 to just $2. And for a family of four, the cost will fall from $20.15 to just $8. For those keen on taking advantage of their local pool during the hot summer months, these savings, Mr Chair, are really going to add up. Mr Chair, I recently joined Councillor Sarah Hutton to visit the warehouse of council's long-serving partner, Sulo. They repair and distribute our red, yellow and green top bins. This company is trialling using more recycled material in bin production. They're using shampoo bottles, bottle caps and even old bins in the production of new bins. It's a great example of our growing circular economy, and this could lead to Brisbane bins being made completely of recycled material in the coming years. That would be an awesome outcome. I can today reveal a new cost of living initiative which I'm hopeful will make these workers distributing bins even busier. From the 1st of July, we will be slashing the cost of our green waste recycling service by more than 50%. It's coming down from $93 to just $45 or less than $1 per week, Mr Chair. This will benefit the almost 140,000 Brisbane households who already have a green bin, but most importantly, it will encourage even more people to take up that green waste recycling option. And of course, in the meantime, help divert more waste from landfill. Our strategy of making green waste recycling bins even cheaper is also squarely aimed at helping Brisbane households gear up for a bigger role- Sorry, I'll say that again. Our strategy of making green waste bins cheaper is also part of our strategy of gearing up for a bigger role out of our food waste recycling programme. But importantly, Mr Chair, we guarantee, and I'll say that again, we guarantee that while ever I am Lord Mayor, we will continue to collect the red top bin weekly. Weekly, not fortnightly like other councils are going to, and that's as long as I am Lord Mayor, that is my commitment to the people of Brisbane. Now, our plan is in stark contrast to Labor's plan for waste. When they say, and they said it as recently as this morning, that they want to immediately go to a citywide food organics and garden waste organics collection service, this is what they mean. They will immediately cut the red top bin to fortnightly, and they will bring in a weekly green top bin collection. That is the reality of what they are proposing. That is the reality, Mr Chair.
Councillor Cassidy, I will warn you. Councillor Cassidy, please, cease interjecting.
Mr Chair, Councillor Cassidy has said we should look to the example of other small councils. Well, that's what those other small councils are doing. Those other small councils have cut the red top bin collection to fortnightly, and they've brought in a weekly green top bins collection. That's what they've done. But do you know what the community has said? No thanks. No thanks. The community backlash in those areas that have moved to these poorly planned food and garden waste organics programme speaks for itself. The community says no, and we say no to a cut to the weekly red top bin collection service. Now, our decision in 2019 to rub out the $30 establishment fee has already led to a 30% increase in the number of green waste recycling bins during my time as Lord Mayor, a 50% increase in that service. And that's also resulted in a 60% increase in the tonnage of green waste that's been collected and recycled. So there's great things happening, there's great increases in green waste recycling, and we want to supercharge it, Mr Chair. Cutting the cost of green bins in half will be a win for household budgets and a big win for the sustainability of Brisbane. Meanwhile, Labor wants to cut basic services in half. Their ham-fisted approach would see red top bins festering in the hot subtropical summer Brisbane streets for a fortnight. Mums and dads across Brisbane, particularly those dealing with dirty nappies, say no. They say no to Labor's plan to cut red top bin collections in half. Mr Chair, our cost of living measures are targeted. They are affordable, and they demonstrate why experience matters. Mr Chair, Brisbane has already got the cheapest residential rates for owner occupiers in South East Queensland, and I can confirm that today, that will remain the case. Over and above this, we're also providing an unprecedented cost of living package, a relief package amounting to almost $80 million. Now, this includes nearly $44 million in discounts and rebates to residents. Over 262,000 owner occupier rate payers, or around four out of five of every rate payer, will continue to benefit from our $60 on-time payment discount. Almost 40,000 pensioners will receive our pensioner rebate, the most generous rebate of any scheme in Queensland. And these measures are increasingly important with the cost of living pressures on everyone. In the last 12 months, the price of milk has increased by over 16%. Insurance costs are up over 8%. Food is up by over 8%. Gas and other household fuels are up by 26%. State government penalties and fines have been jacked up by 7.7%. Electricity in Queensland has gone up by 15 to 20%. And just in the past year, the Reserve Bank has increased interest rates 12 times. Meanwhile, the latest Brisbane inflation figure is 7.4%. 7.4% inflation, the second highest capital city figure in the country. Now, just on Monday this week, another large South East Queensland council, maybe the second largest council in Queensland and in Australia, announced that they'd be increasing their general rates by 6.5%. A second council to our north has increased rates by 5.9%. So, Mr Chair, how much extra will Brisbane residents be paying on their average general rates? Now, that's less than half the rate of inflation at the moment, less than half the rate of inflation, and it works out to about $1.50 extra per week for the average Brisbane owner occupier. For those who already have a green bin, the increase is even less than that with the halving of the green bin costs. In Brisbane, you get more than you do in other council areas, but you pay less, Mr Chair. It also demonstrates that stable and experienced city leadership matters. Now, I'm sure those opposite will complain bitterly regardless, but before they start tub-thumping about rates, I will remind them that our rate increase is in line with the increase to state government charges. The Queensland Treasurer claimed that this was a cut in real terms. Because it was less than inflation, it was a cut. I won't be so brazen as to do that. However, it means that out of almost every single bill that the people of Brisbane have, their rate increase will be amongst the lowest of all of those bills. In fact, this is the second year in a row, Mr Chair, that rate increases have been less than the rate of inflation. Our decision to keep rates at less than half of inflation, along with other measures like cutting the green waste recycling bin costs, capping pool fees, rates rebates, all form part of an $80 million cost of living relief package, Mr Chair. That's $80 million straight into the hip pockets of Brisbane residents at a time when they need it the most. In contrast, the last Labor administration in City Hall produced no less than four rate increases of more than 6%. Something this administration has never done and will never do.
Councillor Johnston, please, I will warn you.
But interestingly, on all four occasions when Labor increased rates 6% or more, what was the inflation rate at the time? Was it 7%? Was it 7.4%? And in fact, the highest rate increase in the city of Brisbane's history was a Labor increase, 6.55%. What do you think inflation was at the time, Mr Chair? Can't guess? Labor jacked up rates more than 21 times the rate of inflation in that year, and they also did something similar on three other occasions. It's because they've never been able to manage money. It's yet another reason, Mr Chair, that the people of Brisbane cannot afford the destructive Labor-Greens alliance that we see being formed here in the chamber. My team understands that residents expect us to deliver them value for money, particularly when it comes to the basics like roads, rates and rubbish. Shockingly, Mr Chair, we know from what Labor and the Greens have said, on the record, they plan to slash investment in roads, they plan to recklessly drive up rates, and they plan to cut back on rubbish collection services. So much for the three Rs, Mr Chair. I want to assure Brisbane residents that we will continue to maintain our record of responsible financial management. And in fact, it's the years of strong financial management to this point that have put us into a stronger position going into this budget. It's a position which has allowed us to keep rates down. This budget, yet again, Mr Chair, is a balanced budget. We don't spend more than we can afford. We only ever borrow to build things, and we certainly don't borrow to keep the lights on or to pay council staff. This budget also keeps our finances on a strong footing with net debt projected to be significantly less than projected just 12 months ago, and in fact, a reduction of around $166 per capita in net debt. Incredibly, Labor borrowed more, yet they built less infrastructure. And they did so at a time when the city's budget was much smaller and much less able to service that debt. Mr Chair, I also want to assure residents on our unwavering commitment to the suburbs. Even though average residential rates will raise by less than half the rate of inflation, we'll be delivering more than ever before in Brisbane suburbs. For a start, our investments in regular road resurfacing, drainage and footpaths are all increasing. From Brighton to Polara, Winham to Lake Manchester, we're investing in the fastest growing capital city in the country because we're committed to making Brisbane suburbs even better. Our CBD may be the heart of our city and the epicentre of Brisbane's economy, but it is our suburbs that are the lifeblood and keep that blood pumping. And that's why we continue to invest in the parks, roads, paths, bikeways and community facilities that our suburbs need. Now, councillors will remember that I gave a commitment to the people of Brisbane that we would invest at least 80% of the budget in the suburbs of Brisbane as opposed to the CBD. Last year, it was 86%. This year, we're upping the ante, 87%. A further increase in investment in the suburbs at a time when it is desperately needed, at a time when people experience the growth of our city and the cost pressures of our city, the investment in the suburbs is going up. Over the next four years, we'll invest $3.8 billion into building a better Brisbane, with a $1.4 billion investment just next financial year alone. That's better roads, better bridges, better bikeways, better transport, all designed to keep Brisbane moving. We'll continue to deliver the Moghl Road Corridor upgrade project, which is critical for our western suburbs. What we need now is for the state government to step up and invest in the Kenmore Roundabout upgrade, one at which $25 million mysteriously disappeared. We remain committed to delivering the Beams Road project. We've even stockpiled enough concrete pipes to stretch the length of 50 football fields. We've seen them, Councillor Landers. But unfortunately, this project is now in question, and it's potentially facing delays because it's one of the projects under review by the federal Albanese government. And that review won't be finalised till the end of this year, a more than six-month period of uncertainty and potential delay. It is bizarre that the federal government has chosen now, a time when the city of Brisbane is growing faster than any other capital, to suddenly put road projects in question, to suddenly question much-needed, critical road and transport investment. But that's exactly what the federal government has done. Now, this budget confirms our money remains on the table, and I urge Canberra to do the same thing so we can get on with it. Residents in Brisbane's north who endure some of the city's worst traffic congestion should rightly be angry at the federal government's indecision. Now, I recently welcomed the state government's newfound interest in road and transport investment in the north side, and in fact, their interest in going underground. I think it's a real shame that it took a campaign from this administration to make them come to the table. Our study found that bulldozing bushland through the so-called North West Transport Corridor to make way for road and rail at surface was akin to environmental vandalism. We said no, and we said that we believed future road and transport projects should be underground. Hopefully, this will be part of the state government's agenda going forward and that this study will turn into action. Mr Chair, our public and active transport network is absolutely critical to keeping Brisbane moving. The state government recently boasted about how it was spending $300 million across Queensland over the next four years on active transport. Councillor Murphy, $300 million across Queensland. Yet our council is investing $550 million just here in Brisbane over the next four years, $250 million more than the state government is spending across the entire state of Queensland, just here in Brisbane. The Breakfast Creek and Kangaroo Point green bridges are fast emerging and will be key parts of our new active transport network. And our record allocation of $41 million for footpaths this year includes $16.6 million towards a major suite of new and upgraded path construction projects. Mr Chair, when it comes to footpaths, that's more investment than ever before. We're also investing in our ferry network, with $35 million being spent on new and improved terminals, including the Dockside Terminal, which is currently under construction. A further $7 million is being invested on new double-decker City Cats, which- which are loved by our residents and keenly adopted by visitors as well, who want to see our city from a new perspective. I can also confirm today the exciting news that we will fund feasibility work into Brisbane's very first electric ferry. It's something we're calling the EV Cat. This work will assess the viability of a new battery-powered ferry vessel to be built in conjunction with River City Ferries and also Ausships, the company that makes our double-decker City Cats. The proposed 15-metre prototype catamaran vessel is expected to carry more than 50 passengers. It will be larger than a Kitty Cat but slightly smaller than a City Cat. The primary role of the EV Cat will be for cross-river services. We think that it would be perfect for the Belimba to Tenerife ferry service. If successful, investigate further opportunities to invest and introduce further lower-emission ferry vessels. This is a really exciting development and yet another commitment to our environmental sustainability agenda. We're also planning to invest almost $150 million over the next four years on zero-emission buses. We've put forward a major joint funding proposal to Translink, and we hope to be able to work with them to start building low-emission or zero-emission buses in the very near future. The local bus building industry has started the journey to gear up their production capacity, and we hope that very soon they will be in a position to help supply a large number of buses for our future. Our public transport system endured incredible shocks during the COVID pandemic, and it's still finding its way back to full capacity. It's critical we make Brisbane's public transport system and our network even better. It's a more sustainable way to travel and it reduces congestion in our roads. And that's why over the next four years, we'll be investing a record $911 million into subsidising public transport services, with an additional $12 million for free seniors' off-peak travel. We've also allocated our contribution to co-fund another specialised high-frequency service, the Gold City Glider. Our money is on the table, a 50% contribution. The Gold City Glider will go from North Shore-Hamilton through to Wollongaba. It will travel via Bowen Hills, and it will go past the new waterfront Brisbane and Queensworth developments. Obviously, this route will service future Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games villages and venues. But more importantly, it services some of the areas that are experiencing the most growth. But most of this growth, Mr Chair, is actually happening in state government priority development areas, areas like Hamilton North Shore, the GABA. These are areas where the state government is deliberately increasing development and density, and they need better transport. We're putting our money on the table. Now, most bus services across Brisbane are funded with a 25% contribution from council. This service, we're putting 50% on the table. It is a good offer for the state government, but most importantly, this will be a good service for the people of Brisbane. All of this is on top of our existing Turn Up and Go fully-electric Brisbane Metro project, which will make commuting far more convenient, and particularly during those peak times. The project, which is supported by all three levels of government, is attracting national and international attention. I've lost count of the number of people who have asked me whether they can get a ticket on the Brisbane Metro's inaugural journey, and I know that councillor Murphy is getting those same questions too. Mr Chair, Brisbane is recognised as a clean, green and sustainable destination, and this hasn't happened by chance. We are the largest carbon-neutral government organisation in the nation. Now, plenty of councils and governments across Australia rushed to declare a climate emergency in recent years. But only a handful of these organisations have actually taken the real and practical step to become carbon-neutral. And we are amongst the biggest and amongst the first. Now, while others blow hot air, we've got a proud track record of taking real and practical environmental action. There is a stark difference between flying over Brisbane and flying over Sydney and Melbourne. When you fly over Brisbane, you see a beautiful, tree-covered subtropical city. You see green everywhere. When you fly over Sydney and Melbourne, you see concrete jungles. You see tiles, you see concrete, you see buildings. That difference is what makes Brisbane special, and we are committed to keeping and enhancing that difference with our investment in the environment. Brisbane's network of extensive parks, 2,100 of them, and the thousands of hectares of bushland that have been purchased and protected are our city's lungs. From the lush grounds of Mount Cootha Botanical Gardens to the roses of New Farm Park, to the tiniest pocket parks spread throughout our suburbs, they all play a role, Mr Chair. It's important that we invest in them, not because they're great places to play, but they are, but because they help improve Brisbane's livability. Today, we're releasing the finalised Victoria Park Barambin Master Plan. This huge inner-city green space represents a unique opportunity to deliver a lush destination that serves our city forever. One that residents regularly visit and also is a must-do for visitors to our city. What Expo 88 did for South Bank, the Brisbane 2032 Games can do for Victoria Park Barambin. We've worked closely with the community and traditional custodians, and the people of Brisbane overwhelmingly support our plans for Victoria Park. And this master plan, the finalised master plan, means that we can now move from the planning phase into the delivery phase. What people wanted to see at Victoria Park was the rewilding, the creation of an urban forest, and that's our blueprint. The release of this plan demonstrates that we are moving into that construction and planting phase, restoring the natural landscape, revitalising the park's wetlands and water holes, massively increasing tree cover, and nature-based play spaces will be created, including a really unique treehouse. Not only will Victoria Park Barambin be a giant green playground for residents, our plan to create 60% canopy cover will increase the homes for wildlife and will improve urban cooling. Of course, Victoria Park will be home to two temporary venues, the Equestrian Cross Country and the BMX Freestyle during the Games. But the master plan is a long-term vision to create a destination that will keep current and future generations coming back. That doesn't mean we're not getting on with the job now, however, Mr Chair. Almost every weekend, Victoria Park now plays host to events and is visited by people keen to enjoy this beautiful open space. For parents, it'll soon be time to pack the kids' bikes as we start work on a great new pump track near Hurston Row. And after that will be the construction of the Spring Hill Common near Gregory Terrace. Our $141 million commitment to Victoria Park over the next four years is a big undertaking. However, at just 13% of our overall investment in parks and green space over that same period, the suburbs will continue to see the lion's share of investment. We're also continuing to invest in buying and restoring important bushland, Mr Chair. It's a programme the Liberals proudly established and one that Labor shamefully opposed. We've recently purchased our 400th parcel of bushland in Brisbane. And 400 parcels collectively means 4,400 hectares. The equivalent of 600 Suncorp stadiums have now been protected. We will continue this important programme with a $30 million investment over the next four years. We're also investing in new and improved parks for sport and recreation. The Murray and Nudji District Sport Parks are both underway and will be enormous assets for the community when complete. This year, we'll be consulting with the local communities of Polara, Upper Kedron and Ellen Grove on what they would like to see for their new sports parks. In the next four years, $60 million is budgeted for new parks, Mr Chair, and $9 million for improving metropolitan and district parks to help make our suburbs even better. We'll be working in local communities on plans for the Brighton foreshore, the Bedsa Street Park, the Taringa Park Playground, Windsor Park, Glinderman Park, Ming Shang Park and the Winham Waiting Pool Park. Workers advancing on the transformation of the Archerfield Wetlands Park from a former sewage treatment plant into a fantastic playground for people to enjoy. We're also creating a concept for King Fisher Creek in East Brisbane and Wollongaba, which is the next project in the Norman Creek Master Plan. We'll complete 12 upgrades to dog-off-leash areas and we'll install pickleball courts at four locations. Pickleball. We're also undertaking a significant programme of works in the Sherwood Arboretum ahead of its itinerary in 2025. We'll invest $3.8 million over the next two years.
councillor Johnson, please, councillor Johnson.
We'll invest $3.8 million over the next two years in the Sherwood Arboretum, including a major upgrade to the Fig Tree Playground. We'll continue to roll out our policy to ensure every playground in Brisbane has shade through our Sun Safe Suburban Playgrounds Programme. Mr Chair, on the topic of keeping Brisbane clean, green and sustainable, I have another very important announcement to make today. For some time, there's been speculation about the future of the city's two urban quarries, Mount Cootha and Pine Mountain Quarry. For over a century, the Mount Cootha Quarry has served Brisbane residents and still to this day supplies 96% of the asphalt aggregates for Brisbane's roads. Quarrying is no longer undertaken at Pine Mountain, but instead it operates as a material recycling facility. Now, while there's still an important role for both quarries in the immediate future, we must now start planning for the future. We must now start planning for their rehabilitation and transformation. That's why today I'm confirming I've allocated funding for a new visioning project for these two locations. We can now explore and plan exciting opportunities to create fantastic green space and recreational opportunities that have the potential to become much-loved destinations. Mount Cootha Quarry covers 26 hectares of land. Pine Mountain Quarry covers 30 hectares of land. To put that in perspective, that's almost twice the size each of the South Bank Parklands. So, these are big sites and they have big opportunities. Some people have already suggested the Mount Cootha site could be transformed from a barren quarry into a world-class environmental precinct, similar to the Eden Project in Cornwall, the United Kingdom. I'm genuinely excited about this truly unique opportunity to imagine or reimagine and create two wonderful legacy assets for our city. Mr Chair, our council is committed to ensuring Brisbane continues to be the most small-business-friendly city in Australia. Being Australia's largest local council gives us enormous scope to achieve that. We serve the same number of people as Tasmania, the ACT and the Northern Territory combined. Yet, the whole of Brisbane approach is important, but it's also a local approach that's critical when it comes to supporting small business. Our investment in village precinct projects over the past four years is a testament to that. They have helped revitalise local shopping strips, entice owners to open new businesses and to make these precincts more attractive to locals. We recently completed our 20th village precinct project. The revitalisation of Lumley Street Shopping Strip in Upper Malkabat was a fantastic success. Anyone who's been to Senzo's Cafe lately will know the big difference our investment has made. New art, murals, lighting, trees, footpath upgrades and bespoke furniture have all added to the incredible street appeal. Shop owners like Wayne Lee from Sweet Crumbs Patisserie in Ashgrove are also reporting the incredible impacts that these projects can make. As Wayne commented recently, and I quote, "The widening of the footpath and the installation of seating and some screening. It's a much more pleasant space for our customers to stay while enjoying the menu." So, I can reveal today that we'll be expanding this programme to incorporate a wider variety of public areas. The Better Suburbs Places and Spaces Programme will help restore and revitalise locations to make them more attractive for locals. The first four opportunities to have this work identified and undertaken is Indrapilly, Nunda, Stafford and Salisbury. This programme will not only focus on local shopping strips, but will also revitalise some of the fantastic places in our suburbs where people like to gather. Mr Chair, our libraries, our sports clubs and other community facilities make great places for free and affordable fun. I've already mentioned the smart lockers that make our libraries accessible 24/7, but we're also investing another $128 million over four years to maintain and enhance our libraries. This year, we'll complete the construction of the Everton Park Library, councillor Davis. I can also reveal that we're planning to deliver a brand-new library, councillor Mackay, in Indrapilly. We'd like to see a new library together with a mixed-use development on surplus land from the Mogul Road Corridor Upgrade, using that land for a great community purpose. Our community facilities will be completed with the new Windsor Community Centre, councillor Wines, and also the Witten Barracks Park and Community Hub, again councillor Mackay. Mr Chair, I also mentioned earlier our council conducted Brisbane's biggest ever clean-up following the devastating 2022 floods. Our motto was to build back better wherever possible because that's what residents expected to see. Today, I can reveal a new $2.6 million programme that will help community and sporting clubs right across Brisbane improve their resilience to flooding. Under the new Rebuild and Recover Flood Resilient Communities Programme, a range of work will be undertaken at 51 clubs based on the recommendation of audits of their facilities. These improvements will include raising essential services such as electrical switchboards, powerpoints, air conditioning compressors and hot water systems. From rugby league to croquet, cricket to netball, the clubs have tens of thousands of members that are all important community and local facilities. Now, we can't stop flooding, but we can be better prepared, and that's exactly what this programme will help deliver. I can also confirm that we'll be delivering a new SES depot at Bracken Ridge, councillor Landers, on land owned by the state government. Mr Chair, last year I told this chamber that the issue of housing affordability was the talk of weekend barbecues right across Australia, and this certainly hasn't changed. The reality is local governments don't control all of the levers to immediately impact on housing affordability, but we have always been prepared to step up and act and do our part. Last year, I introduced the new transitory accommodation rating category. This change meant that owners letting out their properties through short-term accommodation websites paid their fair share. Owners using homes for what is a commercial use should be expected to pay commercial rates. It's a simple principle and one that's based on fairness. We wanted to discourage owners from taking properties out of the long-term rental market while also recognising the higher regulatory costs of community complaints about short-term accommodation. This was a groundbreaking policy at the time it was announced and a reform that has generated interest from right across Australia. Councils right across Australia were looking at similar opportunities. And in fact, not long after we announced this measure, the state government revealed its own plan to better look at regulation of this fast-growing sector. There are currently more than 750 properties in the transitory accommodation rating category, and it has been a complex and time-consuming task to identify those properties. Yet I also observed at the time that council would be willing to go further if required. Let's face it, jurisdictions across the world are grappling with similar challenges. They're debating the pros and cons of short-term accommodation. In France, for example, which will host the Olympic and Paralympic Games just next year, there is a fierce debate about providers like Airbnb. There are accusations that the short-term accommodation phenomena are worsening the country's housing crisis. There are claims the hollowing out of permanent residents from historic areas of the city is also impacting on business. There's also already a cap on the number of days that owners can let their properties out, and there's calls for local councils to have greater powers to police this sector. For a number of years now, councils in Queensland have also been asking for greater powers. Currently, the state government legislation has lagged well behind the pace of change in this industry. We've been trying to act, yet the state government's planning laws have left us with either one or both hands tied behind our back. Today, I'm announcing our plan to ensure that Brisbane doesn't endure the same problems as Paris in the lead-up to the Games in 2032. Firstly, we'll be raising the surcharge on short-stay properties from 50%, announced last year, to 65% going forward. Secondly, we'll be continuing to pursue those owners who are yet to comply, including using digital technology to detect them. And thirdly, I can now announce today that we're setting up a new short-stay accommodation task force. I've asked the Finance Chair, councillor Cunningham, to chair this 12-month task force. The task force terms of reference will include liaising with Airbnb, stays, booking.com and other industry players. The task force will also be consulting with homeowners and body corporates. I also want the short-stay accommodation task force to look at rules elsewhere and recommend a best-practice approach for the Brisbane market. This may result in an introduction of a specific permit to be able to operate as a short-term accommodation provider. It may result in capping the number of days a property can be leased through online platforms. It could even result in a pro- It could even result in a prohibition of short-stay accommodation in certain areas. Clearly, we're going to have to work closely with the state government and develop a shared path forward. But I am confident by working together, we'll get an approach that is broadly supported by our community. We need to strike the right balance between ensuring this second-tier accommodation sector can be available when required while also limiting the impacts on other residents and the community. Mister Chair, this budget is very much one that's been built for the times we're in. It's been delivered in the aftermath of a global pandemic and historic flood. The impacts of both of those challenges continue to linger. We're also in the midst of a housing crisis and facing rampant construction cost increases. This budget recognises first and foremost that households are under enormous pressure. This budget also recognises that Brisbane is growing at an extraordinary rate and continued investment is needed to ensure we retain our livability. On those challenges, this budget delivers. Despite huge cost pressures on our own operations, we've kept average residential owner occupied rates to less than half the rate of inflation. This works out to be around a dollar fifty extra per week. That's far less than other cost increases that people have incurred right across the economy. And it still means Brisbane will retain the lowest minimum residential rates even before most other councils have even introduced their budgets. For the rates they pay, our residents pay less and Mister Chair, they get more. Record investment in the suburbs to ensure our roads are resurfaced and our footpaths are repaired. Record investment in our transport network to tackle congestion and keep Brisbane moving. A vision for Brisbane's long-term future, one that caters for growth but also maintains our fantastic lifestyle. This budget will be, importantly, a balanced budget. It will be a responsible budget. Other levels of government crow when they get a single budget surplus. Not many, just one, a single budget surplus. We didn't go into the red during the pandemic. We didn't go into the red during the flood and we're certainly not going into the red this year. That's what a stable and experienced council administration delivers, Mister Chair.
councillor Johnston. Mister Chair, our budgets are a culmination of teamwork, put together by a very dedicated and talented group of people, some who are in the chamber today, some who are watching online. And I want to particularly thank each and every one of them. I also want to thank the Deputy Mayor, councillor Krista Adams, the Finance Chair, councillor Fiona Cunningham, and also our Civic Cabinet Chairs and other council colleagues. Their dedication to their communities is always the driving force about what we do and it's the driving force for the budget as well. I want to acknowledge the dedication and support of the Chief Executive Officer, Mister Colin Jensen, the Divisional Manager, Anne Lenz, Chief Financial Officer, Mark Russell, Sandra Bridgman, Emma McCarthy and Elizabeth West, who have all worked tirelessly to help us get here today. I also want to thank the senior staff from my office, Chris, Stephen and Michael, as well as Dean from councillor Cunningham's office. In summing up, Mister Chair, I want Brisbane residents to know this. This is a balanced budget. This is a responsible budget. This is a budget unashamedly focused on helping households with rising cost of living. This is a budget unashamedly focused on the suburbs and putting the suburbs first. This is a budget that delivers for Brisbane's future. This is a budget that tackles traffic congestion, investing in our roads and transport and this is a budget that once again ensures that Brisbane residents pay less but they get more in return. They get better suburbs, better transport, better community facilities and a better future, Mister Chair. This is a budget that builds an even better Brisbane. I commend this budget to the chamber.
Mister Chair, I now move that this meeting of council be adjourned until nine AM on Friday, sixteenth of June, 2023.
Thank you. It has been moved by the law mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that this meeting of council be adjourned until nine AM on Friday, sixteen, June, 2023. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. This meeting is now adjourned until Friday.